We'll call the regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, March third, two thousand, or twenty twenty at four thirty P. M. The order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no. Motion carries. Item two point one, conduct a public hearing on considered vacation, vacation of a portion of Monument Street. Sorry about that. Mr. Snowbird.
Dave Schneberg, Community Development Director. The petitioner in this case is City Manager Chris Dalton, and he's doing this on behalf of the City of New Ulm. The city is the abutting property owner on both sides of the street area proposed for vacation. Charter requires that in order to petition for the vacation of property, that you have to be an adjoining owner. The vacation area is legally described as the southerly two hundred sixty-one feet of Monument Street, measured on the Monument Street right-of-way from the north right-of-way line of Center Street. Herman Heights Park is located to the east of the street, and parking area for Herman Heights is located to the west. The city will plat a new Monument Street further to the west of its current location. The location or relocation of Monument Street was a recommendation that came out of the two thousand nine master plan for Herman Heights Park. The new street would have the same width as the old one does, which is sixty feet. Staff would recommend approval of the vacation with conditions. The reason staff would recommend approval is that the vacation of the right-of-way would facilitate improvements in Herman Heights Park. And secondly, city and PUC departments, as well as local communication companies, have reviewed the request and had no objections. The conditions are that there would be the preparation of a vacation plat, and that it would be filed along with the resolution with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Secondly, we would waive the vacation fee since an alternative street alignment is being provided. And third, that the vacation right-of-way will be effective upon the recording of the plat for the new Monument Street. And actually, what we would do is we would hold the plat until the new street is fully improved and open for traffic. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, Dave. It's a public hearing. Anybody else like to be heard on it?
If nobody wants to speak on it, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to close the public hearing and to vacate the southerly two hundred sixty-one feet of Monument Street with conditions.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Dave, we have three homeowners on that street. Did you say they, there was no, no concerns by them, or?
We sent them notice of this particular public hearing.
So they're, we don't know if they're here or not, but if not, they're not raising their hand, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure they were notified. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two point two, conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of the alley of block eighty-nine north. Dave?
Okay, in this particular case, the petitioner is Dan Herrman, President of J R and R Partnership. The partnership is the abutting property owner on both sides of the alley, and the partnership actually owns all of the property in this particular block. So they meet the charter requirement that a budding property owner needs to petition for the vacation. Block eighty-nine north is bounded by North Broadway, Sixteenth North, Seventeenth North, and North State Street. And I might note that North State Street is a closed street, so actually it's part of the parking lot. That is there. The alley is improved and is part of a larger parking area. There are utility systems currently located in the alley area. They consist of electric, natural gas, and communications. The property is proposed to be sold to QuickTrip. QuickTrip has indicated that vacation of the alley right-of-way is necessary in order to accommodate their convenience store and adjoining facilities. Trip, QuickTrip has also indicated that they will relocate all of the current utility systems located in the alley at their cost. And I might note that that relocation would be done by the utility provider. Staff would recommend approval of the vacation with conditions. Vacation of the alley would facilitate the construction of a new convenience store. And city and PUC departments do not have any objection to the vacation. We have some conditions for approval, and those are that they prepare a vacation plat and file a plat and resolution with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Number two, that they pay the vacation fee of seven hundred twenty-five dollars for seven thousand square feet of vacated alley right-of-way. That they pay the cost for local utility providers to relocate the electrical, natural gas, and communication systems currently located in the alley. That they provide a ten-foot utility easement area for the relocation of the underground utilities currently located in the alley. This easement area will be ten feet wide, and it will abut Sixteenth North Street, North Broadway, Seventeenth North, and the North State Street right-of-way. This easement document will be filed with the Brown County Recorder's Office. The vacation of the right-of-way will be effective upon the relocation of the utility systems from the alley area. I would note that we are going to incorporate a provision into the easement agreement whereby the, the utility providers will continue to have access to their utility systems until the project, or the relocation of the utilities is complete, and at that point, that temporary easement would cease to exist. So that would take care of the request.
Thank you, Dave. It's a public hearing. Anybody have anything they'd like to contribute? Did the utilities give an estimated cost, or not afterwards?
The utilities did provide a cost which we have shared with QuickTrip representatives.
Okay.
Mr. President, Dave, I don't remember. Is there any clause that requires the project to go forward? With QuickTrip?
I think the, as long as the, as long as we have access to the utilities in the alley right-of-way, that's our, our primary concern. So there is.
My question is, does the QuickTrip have to develop the parcel?
No, that is not a requirement.
Thank you.
Any other concerns?
Hearing none, I'll offer a resolution, waive the reading, close the public hearing, and vacate the alley, block eighty-nine north of Center Street with the conditions listed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Just one additional item that I forgot to mention. The resolution that's in your packet, there are some changes that they would like to make to the resolution that's acceptable to the city. I don't consider them to be anything significant. If you would like me to share those with you, I would be happy to do so.
Probably for the record, it'd be a good idea.
Okay. Okay, in the, the lowest, be it further resolved, so it's on the bottom of the resolution.
Yep.
We're going to change that to read that the alley vacation is contingent on the petitioner or its successor entitled. So we're adding or its successor entitled to that particular statement. The next item, the next change is the first sentence in numbered paragraph four in that section. And that's going to, we're going to replace Public Utility Commission's electrical system with underground utilities instead. And the final change is in paragraph five. And in that particular case, after alley area, which is at the end of the sentence, we're going to add, as attested to by an affidavit of the City of New Ulm, recorded upon such relocation.
Thank you, Dave. Anything else? Seeing nothing. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item two point one, lawful gambling permit, and that's for Cathedral of Holy Trinity for Friday, April third, twenty twenty.
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no. Motion carries. Item four point one, Urban Heights Parking Lot Improvements. Mr. Stobart?
Okay, I would like to introduce Owen Todd from Bolton and Mink. They have served as the engineering consultant for this project, and they were responsible for the preparation, the plant specifications for the project, and conducting the bid opening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, again, Owen Todd with Bolton and Mink. This project was out for bids for a minimum of three weeks. Bids were received last Tuesday, right here. Two bids were received, the low bid from M R Paving and Excavating, and then a second bid from Rusty Construction out of Jordan, Minnesota. The project, and I'll refer to the graphic on the screens here, involved a couple of parts. It had the base bid of the project, which is everything you see there in yellow, which is actually the parking lot improvement portion of the project. And then also in the base part of the project was the replacement reconstruction of the retaining wall along Center Street. So those two components were included in the base bid portion of the project. What's referred to as Ad Alternate One is the area there in blue. It's a twin eight-foot wide sidewalk with a ten-foot garden area in between from the proposed parking lot back to basically the, the fence around Herman Monument. That's Ad Alternate One. Ad-Alternate Two is the ring in red there, an eight-foot sidewalk around the entirety of the fence around Herman Monument. And then Ad-Alternate Three was a surface treatment to the concrete in Ad-Alternate One and Two. So that surface treatment was a one-foot wide strip of exposed aggregate concrete around the inside and the outside of the sidewalk. That's in Ad-Alternate One and Two. So the base bid, as I said, the base bid, the low number from M R Paving and Excavating in the amount of one million two hundred forty-five thousand thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents. The other bid from Rusty Construction, one million six hundred twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars. M R was low in both the base bid and in all three alternates. Just for matter of reference, and all these numbers in your packet as well, the final engineer's estimate for the base bid was one million four hundred and three thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So the low bid from M R is about twelve percent lower than the final engineer's estimate. The price from M R, and like I said, M R was low on all three alternates. The price from M R for Ad-Alternate One was forty-three thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Their bid for Ad-Alternate Two, fifty-one thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and eighty-five cents. And their number for Ad-Alternate Three, fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Questions from council as relates to bids?
Anybody have any questions?
I guess these alternates are these on top of the one million two forty-five?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
I'm reading this right?
Yep. So, so, so if you were to add all of them together, M R's bid would be one million three hundred fifty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred ninety-six. So about one point three five five million if all the alternates were included.
We know that potentially. You want to go ahead?
You're probably going to break up what I was going to break up.
One comment I do want to make, and I hope counselors bring it into consideration. I mean, fantastic bid from M and R. Further down in our agenda, we're putting in for that legacy grant for more study with Herman Monument in the near future, two to five years. I'm one hundred percent sure all those alternates are going to get tore out when we do the base or tear Herman Monument down. I just don't think it's a good idea to pay for it twice. I, I know the cranes and whatnot coming in there. This will all be removed.
I don't know about alternate one, though. From the parking lot all the way over to the base, that's, that's, I was agreeing with you, except for, I don't know how, the red ring, is that the actual metal ring that's around there right now?
The, the inside of the red ring is where the fence.
Inside of the red ring.
Yeah, yeah.
That was my question, is that, how far up would that go? And if, and more than likely, we will be tearing some of that out of there when we have to fix Herman. But I don't know if we would affect that walkway, would we?
You'd have to come in from the New Ulm north side to avoid all of the sidewalks in their entirety, because the sidewalks that are in yellow would also be reconstructed. So unless you came in anywhere except for the far north end, you'd be driving over those, those new sidewalks.
Okay. So then it probably doesn't make sense to, to have them either.
It's just something.
Something we'll have to add on at some point.
We know it's coming. We're going to do something major with Herman's base.
Yep. I agree.
You know, I guess I'm glad Dave brought that up, you know, so we would support that also.
So as long as you, hold on, bring it home?
So where does this fall in again with our renew funding? Do you have that broken down for us again?
So overall, with the renew funding, with the renew funding and the funding for the wall that has been set aside through the Parks and Rec General Fund, the E D A money, we are essentially right under the total project cost. So the total project cost, including engineering, is one point three six seven million dollars. We currently have one point four million dollars set aside with the E D A funding and the Parks and Rec funding and the city funding for the wall, plus the initial million from Renew.
Add on to what Lisa just said, in the park budget, we had two hundred thousand for the wall.
Yep.
So we shouldn't have to touch any E D A money for the wall.
So, so total project cost, including engineering, like I said, was one point three six seven. And then when you look at the total project, project amounts that we have, so for the Herman Hillside, we had set aside four hundred thousand. A hundred was from Renew, a hundred from E D A, two hundred from Parks and, Parks and Rec. If you take all of that out, the wall out, the initial project cost for Herman is one point one, or about one point one seven. So we're, we're slightly over the anticipated amount of a million dollars. So we're going to have to use all the money that we set aside to do the wall and the project without dipping into the general fund.
Just trying to kind of wrap my arms around all those numbers.
Somewhere, we probably don't need all the money from either the carryover from our reserves or from E D A. One of those we should not pull at all.
Well, I think we said E D A was going to be last, wasn't it?
No, that was on the rec center.
That was on the rec center.
Contingencies on the money for the wall or for the amphitheater.
Because when you look at, Renew set aside a million dollars. That was total project cost, including the soft costs. So on top of the retaining wall being a hundred ninety-seven thousand, there was also fifty-two thousand in there for the engineering. That's part of that bid. So when you add all the soft costs and the wall and the parking lot, the total comes out to about one point three six seven million dollars. And so with the million dollars from Renew, the money that was set aside, two hundred for Parks and Rec, a hundred from E D A, a hundred from Renew, we're going to use essentially all of it. And then not dip into general.
Nothing related, okay.
So good. We got a good bid, so I was very, very fortunate.
No other comments. I'll motion to award the contract for the twenty twenty Herman Heights Parking Lot Improvements to M and R Paving and Excavating in the base bid amount of one million two hundred forty-five thousand thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I'm just going to say that we should start budgeting some money then for the future, for the walkways and everything else, because, you know, when we're going to have a bigger project up there.
We're going to want that walkway, especially once Herman is done.
We have to keep that on the docket.
Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Thank you all. Item four point two, release of George's Ballroom back to the county. Mr. Dalton?
So we have received no inquiries on, on the purchase or development of George's Ballroom. There were some, a couple of questions that I fielded about it. When they, someone had done an initial assessment of putting just a roof on top of George's, it was upwards of over a million dollars. And so they wanted to not move forward with the project at that time. So I would like to release it back to the county so they can move forward with their task force to see what they want to do with George's.
Thank you.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no. Motion carries. Item four point three, downtown Holiday Garden. Mr. Dalton?
So there, there's two items before you today, or two actions before you today. The first one is to authorize an initial assessment of the anchorage points by Bolton and Mink, costing up to seven thousand dollars. With that assessment, that would review any blueprints, as-bills, or construction drawings for any existing buildings or anchorage points that we would want to look at, conduct a site visit, and document existing conditions of up to twenty-four anchorage points, and prepare a final findings and recommendation report to the city for review. This would be the first step in seeing if the garland, the current garland configuration is feasible. After the anchorage points have been assessed, the report will be provided to us describing existing conditions and potential next step in design of, or construction of repair. The second portion of this would be looking into forming a committee. It would be my recommendation to get potentially five to six business and property owners and/or residents, and one or two staff members. I would like it to be more business and property owners as they have more stake in the downtown. And if, for, for whatever reason, the garland isn't feasible, after the assessment and some of the other conditions, it would be up to the business and property owners to select what type of decorations they would like downtown, and then one to two staff members to help facilitate that. I see this committee being more driven by the business and property owners and staff kind of taking a backseat to listen to their concerns, provide information as needed to them, and then report back to council when decisions need to be made.
Okay. I guess I got one comment, I guess. Hiring Bolton and Mink for seven thousand dollars for, to look at the buildings when, in the past year or two when we've been looking at it, none of the businesses want to let us attach to their buildings, why do we want to spend seven thousand dollars to look at something that we probably won't be able to do anyway?
So looking at it, again, the committee, you know, at the work-study session, it was concerned, you know, addressed that they wanted to see if we can continue the garland tradition, the seven thousand dollars to look at those anchorage points would kind of be that initial assessment to say whether or not it's even feasible to move forward in its current configuration without doing the full-blown assessment, paying the four to seven thousand dollars per building to do construction drawings. So this Bolton and Mink will go through, they'll look at all the properties and say, yes, that one needs work, yes, that one needs work, no, that doesn't need work. And then we can see what that final report is going to cost at the end of the day.
There's different potentials of the outcome of that study.
Yeah.
If all the buildings are not able to handle the cables, we're going to know real quick, and the garland will be shut down just because of not being safe. And our insurance guy is not going to say for us to continue doing that. But it could be the opposite. It absolutely could be the opposite, that there, most of the buildings are solid, and they've been there for a hundred and twenty years holding up garland, or sixty-some years holding up garland, they might be able to hold it for another. We don't, we don't know yet. So I, I like moving forward on this particular option. Hopefully, our store owners will support that. And I, my, part of my question is, we're going to approve up to twenty-four anchorage points, which is twelve locations, because they're double. So we have about seven or eight that we've been had the last few years. How are we going to pick those last four or five?
That'll be up to the committee to decide, and that'll be kind of their first action.
Ones that are might be recommended.
All right, recommended points.
So wouldn't we want to have the committee look at it, talk to the businesses first before we spend seven thousand dollars? Because we can use that seven thousand dollars for something else. If the businesses aren't going to go along with it, we're just spinning our wheels. We don't need Bolton and Mink to look at it.
We could do that before we offer the.
I guess my question comes in is, you know, Bolton and Mink, what are they going to be able to tell us? Are they going to be able to tell us if it's structurally sound?
Yes, that's.
They're not going to be able to tell us, right? Are they going to be?
That's what I read, that they will be able to.
That they'll be able to tell us that they're structurally sound. They're going to be able to back that. Then why would we ever need another study?
So the other study, so if they're not structurally sound, then you would, they could, we would potentially then be able to go, all right, we can look at drawing, do construction drawings to make it structurally sound if that's the direction they want to go. If you still want them on the building, they can assess us in that situation. And that's where that bigger number had always come from, was actually doing the construction drawings of those anchor points to make them structurally sound to hold the garland.
I guess, you know, I thought we were, you know, the last few years, we've talked about the garland, we've had a fire and some other situations, and then we have to put out and get an ease, or permission from the property owners, and then everything else. And then we're renewing it, renewing it, and we said it was going to be a temporary situation, but now it's like. you're saying we're revol- revoking to go back to it, you know, and I guess I'd rather put seven thousand dollars to an, another master plan to look at a long-term solution of poles in place, or have that committee talk about the alternatives, you know, on that aspect.
You know, I'm gonna agree with Councilor Mack, to me, it's like throwing seven thousand dollars in the wind. Just, I'm not a licensed architect engineer, I'm very familiar with those parapits downtown in the city of New Ulm, and I know there's gonna be probably fifty percent of them that, huh, not gonna pass, we're gonna have to stick the money into it. I do have one question for Mr. Todd, uh, okay, I understood the city manager say that this seven thousand, you'll be able to tell us building one is good, or without any testing?
We'll be able to.
I'm a, I'm a little confused with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to tell you if a certain anchorage point doesn't have any concerns for us. Cuz we're not gonna do destructive testing, we're not gonna drill into it, we're not planning on doing any X-ray as part of this initial.
Okay.
So, we go through and look at the twenty-four and say, just, just picking a number, say, these six, we don't have any concerns with.
Right.
These twelve, we have moderate concerns with, these six, we have major concerns with. So, this is just to go through and look at the twenty-four anchorage points and determine which ones we think that we're gonna have issues with. And to see if there's any similarities with some of these concerns, so if we can just design one fix rather than twenty-four fixes.
I mean, again, as that it was at our workshop session, I just think we're throwing money at Pandora's box, I'm not gonna vote for it today, for spending seven thousand dollars.
I think that can be part of the work session, or not the work session, but the committee to t- touch base with all the businesses and see if we can get twenty-four points, if we can get it, then spend the money and have it studied, but not do it and not know where, cuz you have no idea where you would even do them or which buildings, until somebody contacts, it tells you.
And until we're directed into which twenty-four.
So, I think we need to do that step first.
You know, I would concur with, uh, Councilor Schmitz, you know, let's form the committee and see how the committee would like to pursue and contact the business owners, are you in favor or not, because there could be ten of them that may not, fourteen that will. You know, and then look at the alternatives of how they want us to proceed for, you know, revitalizing it. But I think the committee.
We can certainly do that, Mike, yeah, my guess is that the end result is probably gonna be a combination of these things, but, um, part of my thought was, if we find out the buildings are not acceptable, we're done, there, there is no more garland, but then we have to move on.
Then we have to find a master plan to both.
We won't know that if we don't do this first part.
But it cuts other liability for the future of attaching to the buildings, that's my big concern. Then entering a contract every year.
The liability is greatly diminished if you have Bolton and Mink saying, these points are good.
I guess I'd have to refer to Roger.
I doubt it.
Well, it depends on exactly what Bolton and Mink is going to say. You know, just, it's a physical question of how secure are these points actually, and I know they'll be candid, you know, with giving us accurate information on that. If it's done, you know, I think what we would probably be looking at would be then some type of permanent easement, so we aren't having to do this every year. Uh, if in fact it makes sense, property owners are in agreement, we would have the garlands in place with an easement that would run, maybe not permanently, but for ten years, twenty years, whatever, over a, a lifetime that, you know, we'd be comfortable with, that these anchor points should be good for, um, so, but we don't know until we get the information.
One more question for Mr. Todd, and just with this visual inspection, you know, like this one is good, so you guys are actually gonna give us that, that thing swing up there at a hundred and ten mile an hour wind speed, it's good to go?
We won't know until we look at it, um, honestly, but, um, we can look at it and say, from a visual inspection, from what we see on the surface, we don't have any concerns with continuing to use this point, but again, we won't know until we actually look at it.
And again, we still, city assumes a hundred percent liability.
It depends. Ask our agent here, but it depends on what the problem is, what happens. Um, you know, I don't know that it's a hundred percent our liability. It doesn't mean we're not gonna get sued, I mean, you know, but it depends on where it's gonna end up.
Should we put our insurance man on the spot and ask him? How about Mr. Firth? He's here, we might as well ask him.
It's the reason he came.
That's why he came.
Specifically not the reason I came. Wanted to hear about Herman, I should've got up and left. Uh, Tom Firth, uh, ten twenty-six fifteenth North, um, I have kind of a unique outlook on this whole thing as a downtown building owner, as a current anchor point, as a building owner who's signed the Hold Harmless Agreement the last two years, uh, as the insurance agent for the city, um, so I guess I'm kind of in the middle of the whole thing. Um, you know, I think it boils down to, and, and city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, you know, duty owed, duty breached. And I think that once the, uh, fire started above that building, the city had a duty at that point. Uh, they were made aware that there was potential issues, and I think the city acted upon that. Um, you know, had we just said, hasn't happened in sixty years, it'll never happen again, and then it did happen again, then I think you're liable, my opinion. Um, so if the city is going to continue hanging the garlands and taking them down, then I think the city has got some level of duty owed to the general public and the building owners to make sure that those things are hung properly and that they're gonna hold, and so, um, I'm sitting back there thinking that seven thousand bucks for a study on twenty-four points to determine whether those points are good or not, I think that's, I think that's money well spent, um, which myself, um. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm one of those that, uh, likes the garland, I think it makes us a very unique, uh, destination city in the winter for people to come through. Um, the, I think the Hold Harmless Agreement probably scared off as many building owners as anything. You know, when you're gonna put pen to paper and say, we're relieving the city of all liability, well, hold on a second, you hung the thing on my building, you know, it's, it, it, it's a little troublesome there, um, so I, I think there's some things that can be done, but, um, I think one or two of you have said, how do we know until we get up there and test those doggone anchor points? And that's what's really on my mind for my own building. Um, you know, if I need to put five thousand bucks into our building, um, because it's falling apart, you know, garland or not, I, I'd like to know if there's a problem on my building, and some of the building owners downtown might, might like to know that too, uh, garland or not, so. Maybe that's more than what you called me up here for.
That's good, thank you.
I'm not opposed to spending the seven thousand dollars, I'm opposed to spending it now without doing the research behind it. Get the committee together, get them to contact all the business owners and get them to agree on that the side of the easement and all this kinda stuff, and then come back to the council, we'll do the study. You know, that's my opinion, but to go out and do the study with no ideas is.
Right. President Schmitz, I don't know, you mean, if, you just said that they would assign the agreement, I think if you mean the agreement that they would agree to have an anchor on, and that's as far as it goes, because it's very possible if we have to get some new buildings, an owner might just say, no, I don't care what the deal is, I don't want one on my building, or they might want one on their building, but it would make sense cuz, uh, Bolton and Mink doesn't know what to look at until we know where we're gonna be.
And again, we could be paying for, you know, what if we only come up with fifteen, and we just quoted for twenty-four, maybe there's a reduced price.
I was just gonna ask that question, yeah, the prices per point, or? Or if that's just the lowest amount you'll accept, or?
Yeah, thank you.
I, I guess we'd evaluate that when it comes back, I mean, if, if you come back and you've only got seven of the existing, yeah, additionally, it could be a reduction. Okay, so maybe it makes sense to get the committee together and get to work on this. Um, I do know that, noticed that, you know, as city councils, we represent, we represent our, the city on a lot of committees, and this, your recommendation is not to have a city counselor on this particular committee, and, and I don't know if that, I don't know how I sit with that, because I, I do think we bring back to the council the discussions, um, the attitude of the committee. Um, not that the committee chairs can't do that on their own, but I, I don't know, I, I think there's a role for at least one counselor on this, whether it's me or anybody else, to be on this particular committee, I, so I kinda feel strongly that one of us should be, should serve on this committee.
I also feel that a counselor should be there, I think that the, the community reaches out to the counselors and we can bring some feedback to a committee. You know, I think the community's looking at us and saying, how are you gonna proceed, and, you know, they wanna talk to us, and they wanna make sure their voice is being heard.
Well, at the last work session, actually, it came from them, they have a couple counselors sit on it.
Yeah, otherwise, I think it's just gonna be felt like it's being driven from staff.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so. So, as long as a couple of us are not afraid of another meeting, you know, and we get a group for volunteers for committees. I did have one resident contact me this morning, she couldn't be here, but she asked if she, you know, she'd like to be on, be considered for that committee, you know, so I don't know if we're gonna make a list, or.
So, are you looking at one counselor, one staff member, or?
I would support that.
And how many community members?
Right now, we have three volunteers so far.
Um, I had.
Did we get any more volunteers after the last meeting?
I had Jody Marty talk, that I talked to last night, who was interested and would like to be on the committee, she was here, spoke last time, but she, um, didn't sign up on the form.
I had Kathleen Backer reach out to me this morning, I don't know if, you know, she said she'd like to be considered for that, uh, committee also.
Yeah, so currently, we have Heather Hammer, Kathleen Backer, and Yvonne Weber as the three that signed the form to be part of the committee.
And they're all three still interested? Okay.
Then we had Jody to it.
And we had.
And then. A staff person.
You got one staff or two staff with?
We can have one staff on there.
Okay, and.
I would say, I would say.
You want to identify that staff person, or you wanna, you wanna think about that some?
Think about that, and we'll, we'll put them on there.
Okay.
Oh, what, oh.
There's probably quite a few we could pick from. All right, so I'm gonna try and move this forward, so I'm gonna authorize the city manager to, uh, set up a committee of the three of, let's name them again, would you name them again?
Heather Hammer, Kathleen Backer, and Yvonne Weber, and then the addition of Jody Marty.
That would be four.
Four.
Larry, did you have one, you said somebody contacted you?
Yeah, it was Kathleen.
Oh, okay.
She's already on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think we could still leave it open for, if we could get another couple of business people downtown.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'd like to have a couple more business members that are downtown.
The committee could recruit.
I hear Tom Firth, Tom, raise his hand back there, thank you, Tom. Uh, I'm just kidding, I won't force you to, is it something you'd be willing to do? Okay, that's fair, that's fair. Um, so if anybody listening has an interest, a business owner downtown, it'd be nice to get one or two more, um, for this committee and contact Chris at the city office.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Then we have to pick who we want to, do we want, or do we want two?
I'm not opposed to two, but I.
Well, let's put two, and if one can make it, one can't, you know, then we've got it covered, so.
Yeah, I'm very willing to serve on it.
There he is.
I'm willing to serve also, I, I don't know, somebody else wants one on, I'm buying it.
I'm willing to, it doesn't matter, it's a, I'll serve with less on it.
Okay, so last and Lisa.
That's good.
Need a second.
Need a second.
Second.
You got a second on that?
Yeah.
So, we got a motion and a second, as we discussed here.
Are we missing, missing anything?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so, okay.
And then they'll just have to get together, pick a time and.
So, you'll originate the first meeting?
Yeah, so once, uh, I can set it up with the initial group here, and then we can determine who else we would like on it, if I don't receive any calls or anything, and then we'll.
Maybe the few that are here could leave you the email, I suppose.
Email, phone numbers and stuff.
Track you down, if they're still here, to let Chris know your email after the meeting or tomorrow.
Thank you.
Sounds great. All right, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, on favor say aye.
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 Pos, no, motion carries. Item five point one, preparation for the twenty twenty spring flooding, Dave.
Get your votes ready.
Mister Council President, members of the council, I'm Dave Borker, the police chief for the city of New Ulm. I'm also the emergency management director for the city, and, um, this is just the time of year where, where, um, we have to prepare for spring flooding. Just a, a quick summary, we've, uh, you've probably heard us, um, out quite a bit as far as on, on, um, different media, we've been in the journal, KYC, KNUJ, Minnesota Public Radio, um, we're really trying to get the message out, we're very concerned with spring flooding, and that was, um, passed down from higher government, from, um, FEMA and also from the Homeland Security Emer- Emergency Management, which is the state version of FEMA. We're, um, really asking local agencies to, to prepare for flooding, thinking that this could really be the big one. Essentially, in a hundred and twenty years of keeping really good detailed records, going into fall, the river levels were the highest it's ever been in a hundred and twenty years. So, that's, and then, you know, on a, on a river, that's always our buffer, you know, where if the rivers, you know, obviously, the higher it is, the, the more concern we have, so. It was, um, realistically at like right around seven ninety, seven eighty-nine, um, you know, going into fall. And right now, today, and that's the Minnesota River, right now, today, it's at seven ninety-two point nine. Um, next week, it's predicted to be at seven ninety-six point eight, and that Cottonwood River's at ten point five, and next week, it's, it's predicted to be at twelve point six, so at thirteen, just that, you know, just as far as maybe a landmark, um, level, at thirteen point two, it, it creeps across Cottonwood Street, on the, on the Cottonwood River. So, you know, the, I guess the concerning, or maybe the bad news going into this is the river levels are high, the good news is right now, the thawing conditions have been excellent, even when I had typed up this, um, request for council action, you know, we didn't know what the, what the levels are gonna be, we still don't, and that's why we, we're really needing some direction, this is just a logical time, we're supposed to go out in front of the council, and we're supposed to ask for that type of direction, so realistically, the probability of the Minnesota River reaching last year's flood level, which was eight oh six point five six, it's, it's six percent. So, likely, it's never gonna even get to that, that level this year. Um, and then the Cottonwood River, to get at last year's level, which was seventeen point nine, it's ten percent probability to get that level, but now again, that's good news, I mean, I'm, I'm always happy when I'm looking at that stuff, and I follow it on a regular basis through the National, um, Weather Service. Having that said, if we get some real heavy rain, you know, spring showers bring me flowers, we, you know, we could be, um, we could be in for it, and we, we recognize that. The Cottonwood River moves pretty fast too, it raises fast, it lowers fast, and that's always the first area of town that floods. You know, it, it goes into the Minnesota River, that's part of the Minnesota River watershed, so, um, just at this time, we're, you know, that's kinda the background, that's a quick summary of, um, you know, what we're looking at right now, so it's looking favorable right now at this point in time, but we're looking for some direction because when things are, um, when we start getting the heavy rains and, and things like that, and, you know, we find out that upriver, a lot of times, that's what happens, we find out that there's been some heavy rains, and we know that within a couple of days, two, three days, we're gonna be having, you know, um, our, our river levels, stage levels are gonna be going up, we, we, you know, kinda have to have a plan of attack, so we, we're looking for the authorization of, you know, like, how far we can go. Last year, what we did is, um, the council had permitted us to essentially give away sandbags. I can't give away sandbag unless I have authorization from the council, it's, it's public property, but they had given away sandbags, but no sand. And that appeared to, to work fine, and I don't think there was any temporary dykes that were even put in or anything like that. Um, and then, you know, there might be some other conversations in the future that, that come up, but at this point, I'm not, last year as well, if you remember, I was up here asking for a, to declare a, a local emergency, and I'm not asking for that because of, obviously, that wouldn't be reasonable or necessary at this point in time. So, we're just at a, a different stage, but I'm looking for that authorization. Um, it's like, you know, we're not gonna bother giving away sandbags at this point cuz it's not necessary, or you can, if you, if we have flash flooding or something like that, you're, you're authorized. So essentially that's what I'm, I'm looking for direction on. And I don't know, Kurt, is there anything that I'm missing as far as that report that you would be looking at? I work closely with Kurt on that and then also we have other members of the committee, um, Christie, Holes, and Kathy Schaefer. Is there anything that you can think of that I could maybe touch on? So essentially that's kind of what we're looking at. And then the other thing that we're, you know, potentially again, because we're going to have to pull the lever relatively fast if we get heavy rains. You know, again, it's favorable right now, but with the river levels high, we don't have that, we don't have that buffer. You know, at, we start, flood stage in the Minnesota River is at eight hundred and we're at like literally at seven ninety-six. So, you know, it is, it is high. It is what it is. Um, but as far as like al- also using like volunteers. That's something I would need some direction for using. Um, if we have, if we just bring in volunteers, there's also, we're exposing ourselves to some, some liability with that as well. Because by state statute, they're essentially on our workers' comp if they get hurt and, and those type of challenges. Generally, what's an accepted method right now is that we rely on, on voids and that's volunteers, um, organized and active during disasters. And there are several organizations out there and they carry their own liability insurance and there's some training involved. And then there's another consideration where we can call in staff. Of course, that's at their hourly wage or at overtime if they're non-exempt. So again, that's, that's kind of what I'm, I'm just looking at. You know, I mean, in general, I know I'm kind of throwing a lot at you, but you know, what? If we had ten inches of rain next week and we know the Cottonwood River is gonna, gonna flood because at, at twenty-one feet, um, there's one home that's in jeopardy. And at twenty-four feet, there's several, there's about eighteen homes that would flood at twenty-four. Now, again, historically, it's never, two thousand and eighteen in recent history is the highest it's ever gotten and that's nineteen point six four. So there's no, there's no flooding, there's no homes being flooded at that point. Again, talking about the Cottonwood and that, again, that's the first one that's going to flood, first area of town.
I guess I, I think it's reasonable to offer up the sandbags.
How many did we authorize to give away last time and how many did we give away?
I don't believe we, Kurt can maybe touch on that.
There's a lot.
Yeah, it was like, that's a lot.
We had three hundred and fifty thousand on hand last year.
Okay.
And we gave out about four thousand.
Okay. So we still have those on hand?
We do. And we were authorized to give out whatever we had to.
Okay.
Give out, but like I say, we only gave out about four.
Okay. I seem to like that philosophy again myself.
I'm comfortable with that.
I'll support that.
So there's no need to order any more sandbags?
Not this time, no.
Okay, good.
And, and essentially even with the, you know, it's nice having a supply of, of sandbags and we, you know, when we inventory them, about a month ago, we inventoried them. And made sure that they're in good shape and everything. You know, we keep everything in a, in a controlled environment, so they're unlikely to rot, but we do, we do check them. You know, we don't just assume that. And we had, again, um, that amount of sandbags, they're in, in good shape. This day and age, we can order and have sandbags delivered, like literally immediately, we can actually physically go up there and pick them up. And they have, as, they pretty much guarantee as much as they, we want, they can provide. So there's a lot of emergency management departments and local agencies that don't carry that, that supply anymore like we, we used to back in the late nineties and things.
So if we authorize to continue with the same policy as last year, that would be sufficient direction for you? That, you feel okay about that?
Yes, I feel comfortable with that. That's the wishes of the council.
I'm going to go ahead and authorize that as a motion.
One other question for Dave. Dave, you're comfortable with that this evening? That's the only decision we make?
Yes, I mean, the other thing is, is like, you know, if we would have to, you know, as far as, you know, my recommendation is that we don't bring in volunteers, that we rely on voids. If, if that would be also the wishes of the council, if they're comfortable with that.
I think that's kind of what we did last year. Didn't we kind of approve that last year? Yeah.
Yeah, that's exactly what was done last year.
But in, in that event, so our emergency director is going to have to come back. Could you add that in or not?
That's what we did last year, so it's already there.
All right, all right. We don't have to do that yearly? Question for the city attorney.
But just as you're discussing this, I'm looking at Nicole because I don't know if you remember exactly what the language was. You're going to have a motion, I think you need, you can't just say.
Can't just say like last year.
Yeah.
I think you need to identify what you want to do.
So, we, we know we got exactly four thousand or just saying that we have authorized sandbags?
My, my understanding is, uh, Counselor Schultz says last year, I, I think you had just left it open, right? We, we gave away four thousand, but I think you, you didn't have a number on it.
Distribute sandbags as needed. So if we have to go get some, well, we'll go get some.
And I'm all right with that. I mean, if you need them, you need them.
Yeah, you do. Yep, yep. Like that's part of what we need to do as city counselors, so.
And then add the volunteers and that, what we use for volunteers, what'd you call them?
It, it's, it's, uh, you know, that we're not just calling in volunteers that we're using, it's called a void. Um, volunteers, um, organize during a disaster. Or organize and active during a disaster is what it stands for.
Okay. I'll offer a motion to both of that effect then.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no? Motion carries.
Thank you for your work in your committee.
Item five point two, legacy grant for studying the Herman Monument. Owen?
Owen Salvo, building official, uh, Counselors Schultz and counselors, we're looking at submitting a legacy grant for, um, Herman Monument. To do a condition assessment again. Um, this one's going to be more intense, um, actually opening up the monument. And seeing what it's constructed out of and what we're dealing with, um, at the base and up on the cupola itself. Um, we did get some estimates of roughly about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is what we're looking at for a phase one, phase two study, um, to do this. So that's what we're going to, um, go for, for a legacy grant. Uh, the grant periods, we have to have an, a preliminary grant, um, in by May twenty-ninth. Uh, they review it and give us information back. The final grant is submitted, uh, end of July. We know sometime in October, November if we've got the grant or not and we could start the work, um, starting in December and go through June of twenty twenty-two, I believe it was.
Is there any matching amounts on that grant, you know?
No, but usually we've got some in kind or we've got some money set away that, um, we'll probably put something to it to make it look like we're, we're invested in what we need to do. And, um, and then we can see what, what the big dollars are going to be.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Alan?
Get all the money you can.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll authorize staff to submit an application for a legacy grant through the Minnesota Historical Society to secure requests for proposals for the investigative study and selective dismantling of the Herman Monument.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no? Motion carries. Item five point three, Minnesota River Basin Water Storage Bill. Chris?
So this is an item that's coming for you. The Minnesota River Congress is spearheading an initiative to secure, um, significant funding by requesting a bill, uh, from the state legislator. That would create a realistically adequate pool of money targeted specifically for water storage in all forms. And I think if Scott is here, he's going to talk more on the, on the resolution and the bill.
Scott Sparland, eight, ten, third north, um, New Ulm resident, homeowner. Were they given the information? Okay. Yeah, what we're looking for is the, uh, letter of endorsement or the resolution, uh, that template that I provided. To date, I can, uh, give you a list of, uh, and I, I actually have a template from like, from Eden Prairie. They've done this and I can give this to staff and they can look it over. And any edits you want to make is, is perfectly fine, or you can just use the template as it's, uh, as it's been presented. We have, as far as cities go, I, I have a list of over thirty entities, uh, here that are behind this initiative. And, um, among which, uh, some are, are quite substantial, Minnesota Association of Watershed Districts. The largest state entity in that respect and, uh, is, uh, the state SWCDs, uh, are also in principle in support of this. These are all your implementers and, uh, yeah, we had a, uh, just for quick background, we did have a, a hearing yesterday at the, in the house. And got the ball rolling and that's going to be held over for some amendments. And there's an, another, uh, bill, uh, that is going to be, um, introduced within the next week or so. Uh, and get a hearing, uh, as well. Uh, one is Representative Torkelson's and the other one is Representative Brands. From both sides of the river, right here in our area. And, um, so the ball is rolling on this. Uh, we'd love to have, uh, New Ulm, especially, uh, given, uh, one of the presentations that was just before this, this, uh, what, what we aim to do in the end. Is have this significant pool of money available to landowners, uh, to stop the water and keep it where it is supposed to stay for a while. Infiltrate in the groundwater, any method, uh, and, you know, accessible to all. And this will be a statewide initiative. This isn't just about here. This is, uh, recognizing that, uh, climate change is, is inevitable. Our, our rainfalls and our, our events are getting more and more, uh, uh, unpredictable and larger in scope. But, uh, to date, I, I do have, uh, City of Henderson, City of Granite Falls, the City of Eden Prairie, City of Arlington, City of Amboy. Uh, those are just some of the cities that have responded and we, we really first, uh, uh, got this information out about a week and a half ago. And, uh, we're getting a great response already from the cities in the basin and we're going to expand that beyond this. So it's a, it's a long, uh, task. It's going to, it's going to take a while. This isn't, um, something that is going to be, you know, probably finish this session. I, I don't think it will be, but, um, we're keeping our fingers crossed, moving through the, the process. And I, I testified, like I said, yesterday and things went well and the ears were perked up at the Capitol. So, uh, I, we'll continue down that road and, and if you, um, would sign on to that, it would be marvelous. So I'll answer any questions you may have about that.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Sparland, you're the coordinator, the facilitator for the Minnesota River Congress. How long you been doing that?
Um, I have been doing that since nineteen eighty-eight.
Wow.
In this position, yes.
Mike, certainly hear your, your passion for, for water, so I appreciate your work on this.
Well, thank you. Yeah, well, we, we, we're getting some, uh, statewide, uh, exposure at this point. Where I just was on WCCO radio here with Mike Max not too long ago and, and the Star Tribune wrote a, wrote a nice article about it as well. And I, and I know that this will start coming out in the media more and more as this gets, you know, it's a byproduct of what we're doing. It's making citizens aware that this is what we've got to do. We've got to start stopping our water where it, where it falls, you know?
Thank you. Yeah, I certainly support this.
I also do one question just for our city manager. The resolution, did our staff do this or this was given to us?
This was given to us and we put it into our template.
I mean, I'll gladly go forward with it, but I'd also like to give our city attorney leeway if he sees anything in there that, in our best interest. It's a lengthy.
President, uh, Schmitz, in looking at this, both the written materials provided and, and also the resolution. I'm not sure if a scientist wrote this. It was probably not a, not a lawyer. Uh, I don't know what RAPS, TMDLS, one W, one P is and they aren't defined anywhere in it.
One watershed, one plan.
Right, but they're not defined. So they're just acronyms that show up and what are we proposing here? Uh, so.
Can we do it and have you make the necessary corrections?
Yep, we could, I can talk to Scott.
Mr. Chair and, and members, realistically, you're, you're not at this point supporting the bill, okay? You're supporting our efforts to work towards getting this bill.
Yep.
Okay? So that's the endorsement we're asking for.
So sometime, Scott, you'll come back with this if this gets endorsed and then you'll bring it back?
But once we have, uh, once we have the final version of, um, our legislation available. Uh, I'll make sure that you all have a copy of that and we will proceed beyond that point.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
I have, I have a question. Um, just in looking at this, can you paint me a picture of exactly what this bill is, is supposed to do? It's supposed to slow the water flow into the river?
No, it's, it's to incentivize, it's to incentivize landowners.
Okay.
Okay? This is, this is a bill that, where the money will be going to implementers such as your SWCDs, watershed districts. Uh, agency, state agencies that, you know, that are, uh, that have projects that, um, would mitigate and slow runoff. Putting back wetlands, uh, soil health initiative, um, creating a better top four to five inches of, um, uh, carbon capturing soil. That also holds a lot of water, okay? So thi- this is a very comprehensive look at anything in any situation that will hold water where it falls. Uh, and collect it in other areas. This is, this is, uh, we, we understand that drainage is needed for our agriculture to, to survive. Um, and that's something that we have to, uh, deal with and we have the ability and we have the technical know-how. What we don't have is the money. And, um, that's where we're headed with it. So I hope that puts you greater understanding of that, okay?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm going to offer the resolution, waive the reading, supporting the Minnesota River Basin Water Storage Bill.
Second. We have a motion in a second off the resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion?
Do you want to add the, the caveat that, uh, the city attorney amend any of the, the language or as, as is?
I, frankly, I think it's generic enough that, um, it's, it's, I think it, it shows support for the concept and the project. It's not committing the city to doing anything, so I think we could probably move, you could probably move forward just to prove it as is.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, counselors, two, one, one added thing. This will not cost the city council any money.
We need that.
All right. No more questions? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item five point four, award bid of Riverside Park Building Accessibility Project. Mr. Schmitz.
President Schmitz and counselors, uh, Tom Schmitz from the Park and Recreation Department. Uh, this is the, uh, the Riverside Park Building is the last and final major, um, building in the park and recreation system. To become, uh, fully, uh, accessibly compliant with this project. This project is, um, budgeted, um, at a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the twenty twenty budget. We opened bids this past week and, um, we recommend proceeding with the low bid, um, to AAR construction in the amount of ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars. Which is twenty thousand two hundred dollars under budget. This will create a ramp system and a multi-purpose deck on the riverside of the building to provide entrance into the Riverside Park Building. And, um, its environmental learning center for all ages and abilities.
Thank you. Another good.
Another good bid, yeah.
You're going to put that money aside, right?
That's coming out of the two ninety fund.
That's the two ninety fund.
I'll authorize the bid award to Riverside for Riverside Park Building Accessibility Project. Composite Materials Option to the lower bidder, the lower bid of AAR construction in the amount of ninety-four thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
I'm really glad that we're doing this. I mean, we, it's our last building that, as you said, that is handicapped accessible. And, um, I know I take my granddaughter there every year and there was, last year, there was a young man in a wheelchair. Go and get in. And that's just not, not acceptable in our world anymore. We need to make sure we're providing entrance to all of our, um, public buildings, so I strongly support this.
I support it. I think it's long overdue. You know, it's a treasure of a building down there and, you know, we're going to have other projects down the line with that building. It's, you know, it's like anything, they, they keep on taking for a long time, but we got to put back and, uh, I support it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See you none? All in those, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item. Let's get, all right there. Six point one, accept list of claims paid in the amount of seven. Six point one, accept listed claims paid in the amount of seven million nine hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-eight cents on a list of claims to be paid in the amount of four hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
I'll move it. Second.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. With no more business, the meeting adjourned to go into a closed session.
Needs to be read on the record.
Yeah, you need to read the.
Oh. Read the closed session?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, performance, okay. The required open meeting statement, the New Ulm City Council will go into a closed session to evaluate the performance of the city manager, Chris Doughton, in accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three A and thirteen D oh one subdivision three.